Good evening. The July 29th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. The purpose of this meeting is to hold a public hearing on the tentative millages and budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal school year. Ms. Martinez Young, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1. Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3. Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Danielle Brewer, Interim Superintendent.
Yeah.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Young. Board, will you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may God save the republic.
The interim superintendent, Dr. Brewer, would like to provide opening remarks regarding the 2025-2026 fiscal year, tentative millage rates and tentative budget received at the July 22nd, 2025 Special Board Meeting. Good evening, Dr. Brewer.
Good evening, thank you. The tentative budget has not been amended since the board received it on July 22nd, 2025. The proposed total millage rate is greater than the rolled back rate by 5.64%. The board has set work sessions to review the budget at 9:00 AM for the following dates: Thursday, August 7th, Thursday, August 14th, and Thursday, August 21st, if needed. The final budget hearing is scheduled for September 9th, 2025. I rec- one more thing. I recommend adoption of the tentative millages and tentative budget for the 25-26 fiscal year.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Would you, Ms. Boston Ellis, would you like to come to the podium? Okay. Good evening, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, Board Members, Interim Superintendent, Dr. Brewer. We are excited to be here. We're getting closer to the final budget every time we come before you. As we spoke last week, this has been an incredible journey, beginning back in January, with the final legislation approved in June. We received the millages July 19th, and we're on roller skates now. We're also looking forward to having more detailed information for you at the special work sessions on the 7th and the 14th and the 21st, if you will. But tonight, along with our budget objectives of aligning the budget initiatives with strategic plan, with the strategic plan, achieve 2026, as well as leveraging available resources to maximize student learning. Those are our budget goals throughout this process. And also, the objectives for today, as Ms. Conrad and Dr. Brewer stated, our objectives today is to adopt the tentative millage rates and to adopt the overall tentative budget. So the millage rates that are adopted at the final budget cannot be higher than the rate that is adopted at this hearing. So you can decrease the millage at the final hearing, but you cannot increase. I think I need some help, I don't see the clicker.
Are you missing the clicker?
Okay. Kevin's heard this so many times. We'll start with the dates, you can go back one. The important dates, as I stated, July 22nd, you received the tentative budget and you approved it for advertising only. Today, the purpose of the Special Board Meeting is to set the millage rate and adopt the tentative budget. We will have a work session on the 7th. We will discuss the general fund in very much detail, we'll go as detailed as you'd like. And then on the 14th, we'll bring back the remaining funds, which include capital, food service, special revenue other, which is the grants, debt service, and our internal funds budget. And then on the 21st, if we have not answered all your questions, we'll come back and address those questions. And then, of course, the final budget hearing will be on September 9th. Want to remind you also, in addition to the budget advertisement in the newspaper on Friday, last Friday, this information is also posted on our webpage. When we talk about funding schools, the first contribution that we look to is our community contribution in the vein of required local effort. And in order to receive the state funding of $265 million, our community has to contribute in the form of the required local effort, which is set by the legislators, $125 million. The property values, which is the basis of our local taxes, increased from last year, 24-25, increased by 10.86%. So our property assessed value was $38.7 billion last year, and this year, it's $42.9 billion. And that has to do, I'm certain, of all the growth that is in our community. So let's look at the millages. Again, the first one is the required local effort, and this is what we have to levy as a district in order to receive state money. In addition to that, there is a category called prior year required local effort. And what that says is if we did not capture all of the revenue that had been preliminarily set out for us in the 24-25 year, there is another piece of millage that is levied in order for us to receive those additional funds. So I would venture to say that those two pieces are required local effort. And they total $126.5 million. The remaining millages are discretionary, if you would, but we really look to levy those as well. The first one is the .7480 mills, and it will generate about $31 million. The caveat with that is if we levy the full .748 mills, then we will receive an additional $15 million, and it's called a compression adjustment. The next category is the additional voted millage, and that's the referendum, and it was 1 mill. Our calculated revenue will be about $41.2 million. And then the 1.5 mill, which is the local capital improvement, which can be used for construction, is that we will generate $61.8 million. So the total estimated local contribution, the total millage will be 6.32 mills, and it will generate $260 million. And this is about 24 million more than last year. Some additional things that I wanted to bring to your attention is that the impact fees and the sales surtax. The educational impact fees were reinstated effective July 1, 2024. And also, the half-cent sales surtax was voter-approved in November of 2024, and it was effective January 1, 2025. The projected revenue for impact fees is about $9 million. The projected sales surtax is about 40 million. Just in case you were interested, Kayla calculated for this 24-25 year that we received $11.7 million in impact fees, which included some interest of about 60,000, and then we also have some funds that are being accrued. But that was about $3.4 million less than what we had budgeted. The sales tax, the original budget for half the year, so remember, it went into effect January 1, the budget was 17.4 million. If you include the accruals that we are anticipating, we've received May. We have not received June or the quarterly payment. But we're estimating that we will have $20.1 million in the sales tax for the 24-25 year. And so we are a little above the budget at this point for the sales tax, so $2.8 million. Next, we'll go to the revenue highlights. Just a few highlights. As far as the federal category, we received funds for federal, state, and local. ESER funding ended September 30, 2024. And then also, there was some federal entitlement uncertainty. But thank goodness, that has been resolved, and we're looking forward to receiving those funds that we were concerned about not receiving in our supplemental funding. And we had calculated that would have impacted the district about $4 million. So we're excited to see that Title III, Title II, and Title IV will be coming to the district. Some increases in our highlights include increase in the unweighted full-time equivalent. So our projection, if you look at the projection from the third calculation in 2024-2025, we have an increase of 1,875 unweighted FTE. And that's from the third calculation to, in the 24-25 year, to the second calculation for this current year. So we have an increase of 1,800. Our base student allocation, there was an increase of $41.62. And as you recall, this includes all of the items such as the teacher's salary increase, our instructional materials, all of those type items were rolled into the base student allocation. Whereas in prior years, a couple of years ago, they were their own separate category. As far as a decrease, our PICO funding for maintenance is still not funded. It's been many years. These dollars are going towards charter schools. From a local perspective, again, the assessed value went up 10.86%, but our required local effort did decrease by .0003. So we had a lower millage, but because our assessed value increased, that's why we're picking up additional funds. There is an increase in local referendum and capital funds, again, due to the increase in the property value. So those, there are no restriction on those dollars. Our voters approved a half-cent sales tax, which we are delighted to be able to provide additional funds for building, renovation, and remodeling of our schools. And of course, the educational impact fee was also reinstated as well. And then charter schools now receive a portion of our 1.5 capital outlay funds. They receive a portion of referendum and a portion of the half-cent sales tax. And it's predominantly based on the number of unweighted FTE students that they have. So let's look at the tentative budget, all funds. For the fiscal year 2025-2026, our tentative budget is $1.285 billion. This particular budget for this year is reflective of about 50 million less than the prior year's adopted budget. So the total budget is about 50 million less than the budget from last year. You can see in the categories, we have general fund, which we call the operating fund combined. That includes the general fund operating, the adult education, as well as referendum. Those total, including fund balance, $652.8 million. The debt service, which are restricted funds to pay, to make debt payments, they total 27 million. Capital projects, these are restricted funds. And we like to continue to say that capital projects, debt service, these are restricted funds. And they are for maintenance, renovation, and construction. We're estimating, including fund balance, that we will have about $371 million. The special revenue fund, food service, is also a restricted fund. It can only be used for food service expenditures. That totals 75.3 million. Special revenue other, this is our grants, whether they are state, local, or federal. We have an estimated about 60 million. You may remember, that number was much larger last year, but that was before ESER went away. And then the internal service fund, which has, this is also restricted for our health and our property/casualty insurance at 99 million. So again, we're basically having a budget that's about 50 million less than the prior adopted budget for 24-25. So next, we'll look at the budget summary by fund. Just want to point out a few things to you. You can see the general fund combined makes up about 51% to the tune of $652 million. That's over half of our budget. The remaining items, I would bring your attention to the capital projects, 372 million. That represents about 29% of the budget. Next, we'll look at the budget summary by objects for all fund. And when we say object, we're talking about the type of good or services that are obtained. You can see that our salaries and employee benefits for all funds total up about 48%. The next highest is purchase services, which is about 13%. That's 128 million. Purchase services includes our, all of our contracts, whether it's the contracts for therapists or any other specialized item that we need. That's the next highest total, in addition to the capital outlay of $188.5 million. When we look at the budget summary by function, and again, this is all funds, what I'd like to point out to you here is that 50% of our budget is supported by instruction. So that's our teachers, our parents. Another 9% is instructional support, that's the media, the guidance. If we look to school administration, that's about 3%. Come down for food service is 6%. Transportation is 3%. So basically, the majority of the funds are either supporting directly or indirectly in the classroom. Slide 14 provides just another look at the general fund combined. Again, these funds are the primary operating fund for the district, including operations, adult education, and the referendum. They cover all of our daily operating costs, including personnel, salaries and benefits, transportation, utilities, materials and supplies, and again, contracted services. So the bulk of the expenditures that are tied into the daily operating costs are in this general fund combined budget. So the budget summary for the general fund combined, the total is 652.9 million. That's including fund balance. Again, you can see the majority of that is the general fund. About 90% of that total combined budget is in the general fund operating. On the right side, there is a budget summary by object. Salary and benefits total about 70% of the entire general fund combined. And it's about $601.4 million for the budget summary by object. The next highest, I would say, is again, purchase services and other expenditures, which can include a lot of different categories of items. Again, we're looking at this from a high level, but we'll go into much detail when we do the funds on their own. So we always want to keep in mind our fiscal challenges, whether it's at the beginning of the budget cycle or at the end and looking forward to the following years. So we will continue be challenged by the enrollment uncertainties, and that's a lot of our choice programs. We've talked about it quite a bit, about how the scholarships are increasing at a high rate. We are projecting that they will continue to do that from now into the future. Also, which we have found to be definitely a challenge is when we start to use unassigned fund balance for recurring items. So we have to always keep in mind when we are adding additional expenditures, whether that item is going to be recurring or it's a one-time item. And we want to stick closely to the one-time expenditures. Technology hardware will be, continue to be a challenge for us in all school districts because after a few years, you have to do a computer refresh. So we're continually replacing laptops, Chromebooks, and such. And then, of course, our age-old challenge is the costs that are associated with aging buildings, vehicles, and of course, our buses. The cost associated with the safe schools mandate has continued to provide a challenge for the things that have to be, that we have to make sure that we are in compliance with, regardless of whether or not we have the actual allocation for those dollars. Just want to point out that our safe school allocation from the state is about 4 million. We're also using some of those dollars to pay for resource officers. We also use the referendum, and then there's grants to do hardening. So we're using a plethora of different funding sources to meet the state mandates for safe schools. And then, of course, the economic challenges due to tariffs and inflation, we're watching that closely. We've had a couple of items that where a vendor came back to us to ask for an increase in price. So we're going to have to keep our eyes on that and make decisions that we need to make sure that we are staying within our budget, regardless of what the tariffs or what the inflation rate is. So just a budget recap. The summary, slide 19. The budget is balanced as required by the law, and I think that was brought up last Tuesday. The total tentative budget is 1.285 or 1.3 billion, reflecting a decrease of about 50 million less than the prior year's adopted budget. Most of that is due to the ending of the ESER funding, as well as we've begun to use the funding that has been set aside in capital for building schools. Two new schools coming online in another month. So that will cause a decrease in the money that we had borrowed to construct those schools. Again, our property values did increase 10.86%, but the required local effort decreased .003 mills, less than the prior year. We continue to have limited financial resources and funding our capital needs. What's in the back of my mind all the time is that $2.9 billion need over 10 years, that even though we have sales tax, we, and other funding sources, the 1.5 mill, we still have a long way to go in meeting those needs for our schools. Again, we will continue to discuss this and in more detail. The general fund, August 7th and August 14th, the capital fund and other funds. And then we will also meet on the 21st, if it is needed. The last slide on slide 20, this provides for our community where they can access the budget documents and also the transparency Florida, which is a requirement of our Florida law for transparency. And now we'll turn it back to interim superintendent Brewer for comments.
Okay. At this time, I should say, I recommend the adoption of the tentative millages and tentative budget for the 25-26 fiscal year.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. The question occurs on the interim superintendent's recommendation to adopt the following tentative millages: Required local effort millage at 3.058 mills; Required prior period funding adjustment millage at .014 mills; Discretionary millage at .748 mills; Capital improvement millage at 1.5 mills; Additional voted millage at 1 mill, 1 mill, and for a total of 6.32 mills. And to adopt a tentative budget in the amount of $1,285,332,143. Board, may I have a motion to adopt the 2025-2026 tentative millages of 6.32 as set forth in the interim superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the proposed millages or rolled back rate? Okay. Seeing none, is there any discussion? Yes, Dr. James.
Just one quick statement, not from, you can stay seated. I just want to acknowledge that over the course of the next 12 months, we're going to receive over $100 million directly reflected from the voters taking action in recent elections, whether it's the sales tax or the referendum. And $100 million is a lot of money. And if we had to cut another $100 million from our budget, it would be incredibly significant for us. budget, it would be incredibly significant for us. And so, I want to just show gratitude and appreciation for the voters who have committed to not only the 10-year sales tax, but the referendum for the period of time we've had it. And obviously, we've discussed previously that we're going to have a discussion about what we'll do in the next election regarding the referendum, but $100 million is a lot of money, and I just wanted to make an effort to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Dr. James. Anything further? Ms. Thrower.
I completely echo board member James's comments and accolades. It seems almost impossible to imagine how we would be able to keep things going without the incredible support from our community. And I know that's why we waited as long as we possibly could to ask for the community's support. I know I was hopeful that maybe there would be some funding mechanisms either replaced or generated from the state level so that we wouldn't have to come to the community. But the lottery dollars, I would just call it a bait and switch. They don't come to us the way they were promised. So, that's dead. How many of us have landlines anymore? Not me, and probably almost nobody up here. So, that source of funding, which was huge, is now gone. So, unfortunately, but maybe fortunately, that has meant that we have had to take our case to the community, and the majority of the voters have responded. So, I continue to be incredibly grateful for that trust and also for the acknowledgement that it isn't something that comes lightly, I don't think, from any of us sitting up here, to ask for that money from our community. And we're community members too, so we're paying it. The only other thing I wanted to point out was that the 10.6 or so percent increase in property values, to me, that's a little confusing because I know that my property value hasn't gone up 10 point, you know, almost 11%, but that's reflective of all of the building that's been going on. So, there's probably a few Mythbusters that we need to come up with moving forward, and I look forward to doing that in the coming work sessions. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Board, we'll call a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 3-0. May I have a motion to adopt the 2025, 2026 tentative budget in the amount of $1,285,332,143?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the tentative budget? Seeing none, I open it up for discussion. Anything from the board further? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 3-0. Moving on to board committee concerns and meeting reminders. There's an administrative briefing and work session scheduled for August 7th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. There's a special administrative briefing and work session scheduled for August 14th at 9:00 a.m. There's a special school board meeting scheduled for August 21st, 2025, at 7:00 a.m. And an administrative briefing and work session scheduled for 9:00 a.m. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. This meeting is adjourned at 6:03. Thank you.